Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 19th meeting of the Board of Directors. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, roll call, please.
Mr. Rauchser?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Eight members are present.
Thank you. First on our agenda is our public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda. It is a three-minute period. If you have anything you'd like to state, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing none, we will begin with Mr. Stefanovic from Dover Township with an update for us on some township projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have too many things this evening. One that is happening, I understand we do it every year, I know I've been involved a couple of years, at the Dover Township wastewater treatment plant, there's a tour session given to all fifth graders, and it's coming up in May. It runs from May 7th through the 11th with, it looks like generally one or two sessions each day, and the students come about 30 to about 40 at a time. If anyone would like to, one, take the tour with the students, you're more than welcome. Plus, Sophie Simon, the superintendent, is always happy to have a few other people around just in case. So I know a few of our supervisors are there to go along, and we always learn something, too. But if you do want to volunteer or join the group, you can give Sophie Simon a call, or myself, I can get the information to her also, over at the plant. I know it's a sewer plant, but from the manufacturing-type standpoint, it is still, they run a very nice plant over there. As far as our project goes for the township with the building, we had our, I guess you either look at it as final or startup meeting with the county conservation people, so it was sort of our final one, that everything is okay to proceed, although it's the first one now that we're actually going to get moving on. Our preconstruction job conference is on Monday, the 23rd, and then we will move in the direction of starting to move dirt and everything else over behind the building. So now, this is for the building, not for the park. For us, the park is a separate project, and that is also moving, I don't know the exact statuses right now, I saw something this evening that Dave brought that I had never seen before, so there's stuff happening all the time. A couple of other things I brought, we get a list each month of the building permits that were issued, and I brought February and March along just for general information. In the February-March timeframe, we did have, we did issue 10 single-family dwelling permits. And to me, I guess this is a prime time for that, maybe a little early in the year, but I'm sure this is a time when that's happening pretty heavy. We did one poultry barn, which is huge, and one cattle barn, which is huge, in our area. And then there were 34 other building permits issued in that timeframe for just a multitude of things, back porches, additions to homes, and those kind of things. So that's another thing that happens with us. Trying to think, those are sort of the main things. I didn't know, again, I ask if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be willing to, or I can go get the information and bring it back the next time.
Just curious, personally, what is the current status of the property that was the old Spangler's Grocery Store there at the corner of Hilton and 74? What's happening with that?
I believe the company that purchased that is Lidl, is their name. They have presented a plan to us, they have revised the plan. The one corner of the building got a little closer to Hilton than they had thought, so they brought a revision back, and it was approved. I can't say I honestly know what's in their minds. I know they do have three stores semi-in-process in York County. One up around the college, ours there at that location, and one over in East York. The one at the college is the only one where they've actually done construction. We have been told that they would like to open them all at the same time, and when it starts, it'll happen quick. That's the most I know. We can't make them start, not that I know of anyways.
Just curious. Thank you.
Right next door to that with the demolition that's going on there, is there anybody actually known that's coming in there, or what is the plan for that area?
Yes, there is a plan, a preliminary plan that we've seen that shows a, I think it's, is it Rite Aid there on the corner of Hilton? If I'm saying that right? I believe they're going to-
Poplar.
Pardon?
Poplar.
Yes. Yeah. They're actually going to go into that complex, and then I believe there is going to be a fast food that's accessible from Hilton. And then there is going to be, I've seen a lease sign go up for businesses, that there are going to be some other businesses in a strip mall style running parallel with Canal, or with 74, I'm sorry. So, we haven't seen a final on that yet, but that's about the most I know.
Just curious.
Yeah. One of Dunkin' Donuts, that one, we did see the same meeting you were at, and even there, there is one other business that will be part of that construction, and we don't know what it is yet either. I noticed a sign went up on that one, maybe two weeks ago or so, probably right after our meeting, and that was all approved, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Is that it? You bet. Thank you.
Okay, next is budget presentation. Mrs. Benko.
Okay. I'm hoping that this one will be a little shorter than the last two have been. This one's only 16 slides instead of 30. So this was the April 17th preliminary budget overview that I had presented to you with a budget deficit of $2.28 million. And we made some changes because of feedback we received at the April 17th meeting, and feedback received from the board within the past day or two. So because of this feedback, currently, our preliminary budget, the preliminary budget that's on for board approval tonight, to be advertised for public inspection, has a budget deficit of $2,45,166. What were the changes from Tuesday's budget presentation? Because of feedback from the board within the past day, we added to our tax increase. Originally, we had it at 1.23. Now, in the preliminary budget, the average feedback that I got put us at a tax increase of 2%, along with updated calculations from some minor assessment changes, and also additional medical access revenue because of putting back the access coordinator position at central office that was in place in the original budget presentation back in March. So what does our final preliminary budget consist of? From the professional staff, it includes a hiring of five teachers to support class-size reduction, one being funded out of Title I. Again, at the IS, we are swapping a retiring physical education teacher for an intervention specialist. At the high school, we are swapping the retiring CTE teacher for a Spanish teacher. We're going to comply with our contractual increases for a 2.9% wage increase, plus column movement for professional staff as they obtain more credits. The instructional advisor currently under the administration staff is moving to the professional staff, and we are eliminating the high school dean of students position and putting in place another assistant principal. As far as support and confidential staff budget components, we are swapping a retiring head custodian to the addition of a custodial supervisor for second shift. That person will be under the confidential staff, and will be, because they will be a supervisor of bargaining unit employees. We reduced the three temporary building aids, which were originally implemented this year for class-size reduction. We're eliminating the floating library secretary, which visits all four buildings. We restructured the secretarial staff, including the addition of a part-time, 10-month secretary at Live Elementary, and the elimination of a 10-month secretary position at the high school, which the duties will be molded into those of other secretaries at the high school. The support staff wage assumptions, we had made in preliminary budget due to negotiations coming up, ongoing, because their contract expires on June 30th, and we are replacing the access coordinator position. The administrative budget components. The one instructional advisor, again, going to the professional staff. The second instructional advisor will be transitioning to the assistant director of exceptional children. The high school dean of students possession will be transitioning to, well, we will hire a assistant principal in place of a high school dean. And we assumed a 3% wage increase for administration, although the Act 93 agreement also expires on June 30th. Other preliminary budget components, these ones have not changed from the last time, so there was the funding holiday for healthcare, a 0% increase in the healthcare premiums for employees, unless other premiums are negotiated. For support staff, pieceers rate increase, as we had talked about before. The increase in the number of seats for York Adams Academy from 14 to 18. Professional substitute rate increase, and the employee assistance program. Also within the preliminary budget is the inclusion of the intermediate school department heads, the full-size iPad initiative, and the extra funds put into the budget so we could have a budget for the public communications and social-emotional student resources. Those will include professional development for professionals, community outreach services, and continuing education. Does anybody have any questions on those slides as far as staff and the other components that affect expenditures? No? Okay. Okay, so as far as the tax revenue that is included in the proposed preliminary budget, we are including, again, a 2% tax increase, which is, which equals .439 mils. This 2% tax increase will be utilized in the following ways. 1.23% of it, or .27 mils, are being put in place to assist with funding future capital, the future high school, and to help phase in the millage for the bond issue for that high school. The other .78%, or .169 mils, that is being put in place to assist in the funding of the 2.21 increase in expenditures in the general operating budget for the general fund. Again, you've seen this table before. We went with the 2% based on feedback, which gained us, from the original preliminary budget to this one, approximately $120,000 more in revenue. So the other options are there, if, you know, in May, if we're going back and forth in May, and we, you know, if we unfortunately have additional expenditures that we need to budget for, or, you know, if we find more revenue, then we can take into consideration some of those other increases instead of the 2% that we budgeted.
Question, Jen, you said the increase between the 1.23 and the 2% netted us 120, or is it 220?
I'm sorry, it's 220. Yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
220,000. So where does that increase put us in, relative to other districts in York County? As you can see, it puts us right about in the middle. However, this assumes no other district in York County raises taxes, raises their millage rate. So, I mean, I would guess that at least some of them will. So I think we'll stay around the same area on this table. And we would stay there if the board decided in May, you know, we need a little bit more revenue, we would stay there if we went up to the index. That's where it would put us. So I just want to make sure that we communicate the impact of the tax increase on our operating budget. Again, the tax increase of .27 mils, or the 1.23%, that is being put in place to offset, or to phase in some of the millage increases needed for this project. We are transferring capital projects reserves into the general fund to make sure we can pay for the debt service for the new high school for this first year. We will continue to do that for the next five years, ultimately using $6 million of our capital project fund reserves to put towards our project. So our 1819 budgeted debt service for the new high school is $1.4 million. So you can see how there, that piece of the tax increase has no impact on our general operating budget. And so even if we didn't do that piece, we would still have a $2 million deficit. So the 1819, the rest of the budgeted tax increase, the .78%, or 1.169 mils, that will go to help fund some of the increase in the operating budget for this year. Again, it's $221,024. So here is the final preliminary numbers again. Budgeted revenues at $61.7 million, budgeted expenditures at $63.8 million, leaving us with a deficit of $2,45,166, I'm sorry, $2,45,166. Again, you know, this is a preliminary budget. We will continue to work on this within the upcoming months. We'll monitor to make changes and adjustments as revenues change or expenditures change. We're going to continue to look at our IU special education services and staffing, and outside placements of special ed. And any other feedback, or, you know, ideas or directions that the board can give to us after this point, up until the final budget adoption in May, would be greatly appreciated.
Hey, Jen?
Yes.
I didn't see on there, and maybe I just missed it, I know Tuesday we talked about three professional staff salary increases. Is that-
Those are included. Those were included in the preliminary budget as presented, yes.
Okay. Okay. So they weren't taken away? Okay. Just wanted to double check.
Nope, they were already included.
Okay.
Okay, so where does that leave our fund balance for 1819, or 1718 and 1819? So currently, I'm projecting our deficit for 1718 to meet what we had budgeted at this time last year, a $2.1 million deficit. So I'm projecting our fund balance at the end of 18 to be $14.9 million. And then with the projected deficit for next year, our general fund fund balance is at, will end at $12.8 million. And then if you add in the capital project fund balance, at the end of 2018-19, our total available funds would be $24 million. Again, we're utilizing a lot of that capital project fund money, approximately $5 more million for our high school project, possibly $5 million for the current high school to be renovated to the middle school. And those were set aside through prior year's fund balance.
Are they, are they part of those numbers, to come out of those numbers for-
So, of the 11 million that's in capital projects?
Yeah.
We would still, we're still going to utilize about $5 million of that 11 for the new high school project.
Currently?
Currently.
And we had talked about the potential of using from that fund balance as well-
From that, yes.
-for the renovation of the intermediate-
Correct.
-or the current high school?
Yep.
Okay. So if both of those things happened, that would just about deplete that as it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
In regards to the building project and the millage we're implementing on that, has anybody been in contact with Mr. Phillips lately with looking at where the markets are right now as far as-
Yes. So he has, I updated the information for our official statement that they utilized to send to Moody's for a rating. I have a rating call on, I believe it is May 2nd, with Moody's and Ken Phillips. We will go through that process and hopefully be able to issue our bond prior to the rate, federal rate increase in June.
So are we still looking-
We are still where we were.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, Board President's communication. We did have an executive session prior to our committee meetings tonight to discuss matters related to our legal representation. With that, we'll move on to our committee reports. So first will be the Capital Project Steering Committee and Safe and Support of Schools. That'd be Mr. Emmig reporting out tonight.
Okay. The first thing we had talked about was the Dover Eagle Park, and Mr. Nelson is going to present a slide that he had shown the committee upstairs, so that all the board members and the people in the audience can see what he had displayed to us.
Can you have it over me as a view? I sent it to you. I'll send it to you, but it'll be the second one, not the first one, right here. Is there attachment? Down.
Let me open it there. There it is.
Okay. I'll actually stand up here. I'll stand at this one over here. Point and click.
Okay. So a couple months ago, I don't know exactly when it was, we kind of talked a little bit about Eagle View Park. They're going to build a park adjacent to our football stadium, kind of over where the old golf course used to be, and it's going to wrap around on the backside here, and would have had a little impact on some of our property and back in the tennis court. So I got this today, this map today, now they're proposing another, like, change to it. So I wanted to bring it to your attention so you knew what was, what was being proposed, because I'm not going to approve it, or, you know, that's not my job. So what they're proposing is to put-
Dave, can you talk into the microphone, please? Thank you.
What they're proposing is to put a road coming off the corner of Reservoir Drive here at the bottom of the hill, from here back to the side of our tennis court. That would all be on our property. So it would be down where the football practice fields are. Now, it would probably be outside of where we practice, but it would be right on that, kind of like that edge there. It would come up here, and then there would be, I don't know what you want to call it, a little Y there, so you could either go this way and pick it, we have, we have a walkway comes down here now. So you could either go up and pick that walkway up, or you could come down this way, and then it comes around, and this is all I got, so I don't know what it looks like from there down. This was all I got when she sent it. Goes around the back of the tennis courts, and then they pick it up over here again. It comes up, and it would come up, this is a concession stand on the football field, so it would come up on the backside of that concession stand. Now, I don't know what it is, I didn't get a chance to make any phone calls and find out any more detail on it. Is it, is it stone? Is it blacktop? Is it pervious blacktop? I don't know what it is. The only reason I say it's a driveway is, it looks wider than a walking path to start with, and they talked about, in an email that was attached to this, about using it for construction vehicles during construction, which makes me tend to believe it's going to be a driveway. But again, this is something different from what I showed you way back. Probably longer than I think it was, but probably six months ago, I don't know. And I know we put a letter together supporting the project back, and I know if I dug, I could find it, but, but anyway, that's what they're proposing, and I wanted to bring that to your attention, so you know, you guys can make a decision on if you're okay with that, you need more information, that kind of thing.
I have questions.
Okay.
So it's by the tennis court there, so you're saying that the one goes over to where that walking path is, which I know what you're talking about?
Yeah, this walking path here.
Right, but, so the road just like ends at the walking path? I mean-
Yeah, right, that's all the further they're going to go, right here. And that's where our walking path ends right now.
Right, but do we want vehicles where our kids are walking to and from practices?
Well, I don't know, I don't know when this, if it's a road, is it going to be open all the time, or is it only going to be open for emergency access, or is it only going to be used for construction? I don't know that answer.
Right, because I know if our kids are practicing football right next to it and construction-
Right.
I mean, I have a lot of specific questions.
Now, the other question I have is, and again, this is my question is, and you cannot see it on this print, there's a fence alongside of this practice football field, probably, I'm thinking eight foot tall, give or take. Is the fence on this side or on that side? I don't know that either.
Do you have any idea if this is a temporary thing for-
No, this would be permanent. This would be permanent. This would be permanent. Now, whether or not it would only be used for vehicles when it was under construction, and then no vehicles will be allowed after that, that might be, that might be the fact, but I don't know that. And if it's capable of, I'll say it this way, if it's capable of having vehicles driven on it, and you don't put a gate up or something, you're going to have cars on it. You're going to have cars on it. I'll guarantee it. So, back here, you have, how many are you familiar with alongside of this driveway? There's probably a good seven to eight-foot drop from our driveway down to the level of this meadow here. So there's going to have to be some grade changes there, not on our side certainly, but for that, for that to work, and then-
Sorry.
That's okay. And like I said, this is, the walking path always came around here, but it didn't hook up this way. It kind of came around here, and then it went down across this way. This is all, this is all new here. This is all something different from here up. And it used to connect up, but not where it does. It used to go out, actually, this went out right, almost out to the corner here, came in like this, where now it's coming up on the driveway, so.
Dave, I know, so some of that is on our property, right? The-
Very, very little of this is on our property.
What about the other side? With the, their construction driveway?
This is, this is all our property, and this is all our property up to, and I'm not so sure exactly where the line is, but I think it's like right here.
So what does that do in terms of liability?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I can't tell you. That'd be a Ben Pratt lawyer question.
If, you know, some accident happens and you're actually responsible, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
We would have to reach out to the solicitor on that, and our insurance rep.
But, like I said, I got this, and I wanted to bring it as quick as I could, because I knew that Dave was at our meeting, they wanted our thoughts on it, and-
And maybe I missed it in the beginning, but what, other than construction access, is there a purpose for it?
It would be a walking path.
Just a walking path?
To get to this eagle, I didn't bring the print down.
Or as part of the park?
Yeah, as part of the park, yeah. Because the park all sits, this, this would go across, there's a creek right here, so this would go across the creek, there's obviously a bridge here, and then down in here, there was a couple, another bridge down here, and then even though it's not shown on this print, there's walking paths, like a nature-type trail that goes back through there. I asked her to send me that print so I could throw it up on the board, and she sent me the exact same print I had, so it didn't, she didn't get what I really wanted. So, but- So, but...
The project presented this to us on Monday night in the same fashion. I have no idea what their purpose is there. I'm sure we will ask the same question you are.
I mean, I support the idea of a park. I think that's great.
Yeah, I do too. I think it's great too.
You know, allowing us to have access to it and that type of thing, I just, I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions.
And personally, I don't have a problem with this being an access road for, for, for myself, but I'd want to know how we're going to control that. How are we going to keep a sixteen-year-old kid with these, just got his license out of there? You know, that kind of thing. I want to make sure we, you know, somehow or another that we, we have that covered. I mean...
Well, maybe, you know, maybe just, just thinking about that project, maybe there would be a gate across it at the end that would allow for people to...
Could be.
And walk, but could be opened up for access. And I was, I was also going to mention that, that fence that is there, which we're not sure which side of that road would be, maybe the fence could be moved so that the fence would be on the inside and the, the walking path would be on the outside. That would be a little bit of a safety and...
There's, there's enough room to drive like a gator back there, but I don't think you could drive a car back there or pick up.
Yeah, the fence would probably have to be moved inside, just thinking.
So, and I think originally from, from, if, I don't, I didn't put the email up here, but if you see the email, originally it said about, the, this access road was over on the other side of the creek, and they wanted to move it to our side because there's less trees to cut down, there's less earth to move, there's less labor to do, so.
I would, I would just be concerned if it's going to be used on a regular basis. Again, the liability, if it's our, if it's on our...
And that, that would have to be, again, that's a solicitor question. I couldn't answer that one, so.
The far corner out there at Reservoir Drive where it sort of cuts across the field, does that have any impact on any of our athletic activities, band activities, things like that where that's cutting off?
I'd really have to, I'd have to walk down there with this print to tell you. I'd, it's kind of hard to, when you look at this print, to overlay where our football field is in there because it's not shown on the print, but it's, it's going to be close. But there's a huge, what you can't see is there's a huge swale that starts about right here between there and the road, which takes all this water that comes down off this hill, takes it around this corner and brings it down this way. So, if we're going to jump that swale, there's going to have to be something in there to bridge it, whether it be a pipe or something, there's got to be something in there to get rid of that water, otherwise you're just going to back up the water, we're going to have a, we're going to have a wetland on our hands. So, I mean, from, from, from my perspective, that, if it is a drivable road, it gives us great access to the tennis courts, it gives us another layer of safety for the tennis courts of a kid would get hurt down there, we can get an ambulance down there, we can get a car or something down there to haul them out, which is, it's, normally it's not too bad, but if it's wet, that can be, that can be a real chore. So, so hopefully Monday night, I'll get more information, and then I'll try and share that with you all next week, what I know, through an email, if that's okay, and then we can go from there.
Discuss it next month.
Yeah. Any other questions I might be able to answer?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, for updating us on that project there. The only other item that we went over was a couple D-10 requests. I'm not going to go through all of them because we're tabling some of them, but the ones that they're looking at, they wanted to add surveillance cameras to the stadium. However, they're not pleased with the current cameras we have, so they're looking at possibly just adding one to, one gate at the stadium. They did install new cameras in all the office, main offices at each building. The multi-purpose room at Weigeltstown, they want to install the motorized blinds for the gym. They want to repaint the fifth-grade hallways at Weigeltstown. The hot water heater at Live does need to be looked at, and they're going to replace that this summer. And the other thing is roofing at Live, they need to evaluate that to possibly do repairs and replacement of that. So, other than that, and the roof at Live is actually, it's a rubber roof, and it's over eighteen years old, so that's what they're looking at. So, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Rollhauser, did I, anything else to add?
No.
Mr. Eifer?
No, I think you covered it.
Mr. Dasho?
Nope.
Okay, then that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to comprehensive planning with Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Malley.
We actually had a relatively short meeting here, but went over a lot of information. Mrs., Mrs. Guyer went over initially, talked about our special, special education classes in, in our program, gave us some, some numbers and such. Learning support enrollment for the district has grown thirteen percent since 2015, and this grows, growth has resulted in the additional, in the addition of two learning support teachers. We also had, have an increased enrollment in our life skills support classes, and that has increased thirty-six percent, but we have not had to add any additional teachers at this point. We have autistic support class has increased fifty-nine percent since its inception or our return to the district in 2015, and one teacher has been added. And a co-teaching model will be implemented at Dover Intermediate during the 2018, 2019 school year for the learning support classes there. One of the things that we did discuss briefly is just with some of our emotional support classes. They are LIU-supported classes, so the LIU has, has the staff in there as a, as a district, and we're seeing some additional enrollments into that program. So, one thing that as a district and as a board, we're going to take a look at over the next couple of years, I, I think, is the pros and cons of keeping it LIU versus bringing that, that program back in our, our district, since, again, we're aware of the cost implications with, with utilizing at the LIU. So, again, obviously, we're not going to do that this year, but just something to keep in mind that that might be a discussion down the road on whether or not to bring that back. I hate what, we just have that there too.
You have to have it. Two, two.
Two.
Two fingers.
Two fingers. Oh, too far.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
See? Technology, not me. All right. Like I said, the emotional support and therapeutic emotional support classes are run by the LIU, and since 2015, we've had a thirty-six percent increase in enrollment in those classes. Our visual repair classes and speech language services are also run by the LIU. Other related services provided by the LIU included occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision, mobile therapy, and deaf, hard, hearing, and psychological services. And we did, we, we talked briefly, I had a question on the occupational and physical therapy of why the district is paying for those services, and is there a way to recoup that money? And that coming back to the access coordinator. So, it's such a good thing that, that we're going to be implementing on that and hopefully getting some money back, additional revenues from that. And then after that, Dr. Maloney and Mrs. Stroll, thank you, talked about our curriculum review plan. They've established a three-year plan for us to, to implement our, our new curriculum with specific dates that they're going to bring in those, those plans to us for approval. They did have a curriculum advisory council, which is including administrators and secondary department chairs and appointed elementary teachers. The curriculum advisory council is going to work to establish and revise a curriculum, and the process includes review of the standards, creation of a curriculum map, which includes the essential questions, content, skills, resources, and standards, and the pacing guide. Their hope is to, their plan is this August to present to us the K to six ELA and seven eight ELA.
Math.
Seven eight math, I apologize. Seven eight math for implementation for next year. So, we're going to look forward to seeing that. And then in the next two years, again, throughout the school year, we're going to hopefully bring forth additional curriculum for us to approve. I think they've done an outstanding job so far, from what I'm hearing. The plan that they have in place, I think, is really doable, and I'm looking forward to, to seeing the stuff implemented, these curriculum changes implemented for our district. That's got, that's all I got. Mrs. Malley?
No.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Anybody? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next. This would be an appropriate time, I believe, to introduce a new person. I saw a new face in the audience tonight, so I'm over here to Jen, who's the new face in the audience? And she said it is?
Mrs. Jennifer Lepo, she is our assistant business manager that we also gratefully hired last March. She started with us on a temporary basis last week and this week, and she will be here on a full-time basis starting Monday, and so, welcome to Mrs. Lepo, and we are so glad to have her.
Welcome. So, we're going to ask her to give the fiscal resources report tonight. Mr. Cook and Mrs. Britton.
I actually like that idea. Put you on the spot. So, we had a, quite a few items on our agenda tonight, but not a lot of substance at this point in each individual item. There's still information being gathered as we near the end of the year on a lot of the contracts and the insurance quotes and things like that. So, there, there will be a lot more information given out, and we'll be voting in, in May on some of the, those things. But just to highlight a few things that were, was on our agenda, as far as insurances we're looking at, anticipated somewhat level costs for the majority of our insurances, with one exception, and that is the workers' comp insurance. We've had more claims, several more claims that can impact them in the last couple of years, so we'll be anticipating, again, over the second year, probably a higher workman's comp cost there in insurance. Food service budget was on our agenda again to, or tonight, and will, will be again next month. No, no major red flags there, but still information being gathered, but that'll be coming for a vote for us for next month. As will PSBA dues, annually, we look at that, so we'll be looking at PSBA dues again next month. We spent a little bit of time talking about budget transfers as we near the end of the year. We have to, as a board, give Mrs. Benko the opportunity or the, the authority to make budget transfers at the end of the year to finish out the fiscal year. And it's worth noting for, for us as a board that throughout the, throughout the year, we always see budget transfers as part of our agendas month to month to month. There's a difference between what happens throughout the year and what happens at the end of the year. And in a nutshell, you know, in our expenses, there's clusters of expense categories, like there might be three hundred group, four hundred group, you know, so on and so forth up and down the line. As long as you're transferring money within the same cluster and it's not going from general education to special education, there's leeway for Mrs. Benko to make those transfers. Where you need to get board approval is when things have to be transferred out of a, one cluster to another cluster, or where it has to be from, say, general education purposes to a special education, that sort of thing. And that's what we need to get her approval for at the end of the year here to make some of those adjustments that need to happen. So, that's a little bit of an education here for, for me, I didn't realize that, so I thought you might want to know that as well. Last month, we had a, a offer to try to put a second SRO, which we voted in favor of, into place here for the remainder of the year. As you recall, that was being sponsored by a business, and that is happening. It actually happened a few days after our board meeting that night when we authorized that. Just to give you a little bit of, of an idea of how it's working right now, there is a second SRO who is spending part of his time, his or her time, it's, it's more than one person involved in that, as I understand it, but they are spending part of their time at the intermediate school, primarily like at lunchtime, at arrival time in the morning, might be a third time during the afternoon, but then they're also filtering down to try to visit all the elementary schools as well. So, there's, there's a much heavier presence right now with, amongst, you know, all the schools right now with that second SRO. Again, this was a funded project, it was a donation that really stimulated this, and there's no absolute intent to continue it beyond this year, but it is working, it is in place this year for the remainder of this year. And as Dr. Weisling said, there's many, many blessings that are coming at as a result of having this second person out there. It's really drawing our police staff with our, you know, students and, and our internal staff as well, so, but maybe you might be interested in that. So, that's all I really have. Mrs. Britton, anything else that I, okay?
Any questions from anybody? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next part of that committee. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2018 and 19 proposed final general fund budget for public notice with revenues of sixty-one million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, and expenditures of sixty-three million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Again, this is not the final, final budget at this point, this would just be the proposed budget for public notice. We will vote for the final budget in May. Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, Mrs. Benko? Okay, we're on our miscellaneous category. For any other comments or observations from our board members tonight, does anybody have anything else?
I just want to thank Jen for all her hard work through all this. It's been a long week, and I'm sure hers is half, or twice as much as ours has been. So, thank you, Jen, for all your hard work and all you do for us.
She said that Jen Lepo is doing all this next year.
She was actually very helpful to me today and saved my, probably saved me from actually not being here tonight.
Anybody else?
Yes. Do you want us to hand our ballots in and so you can keep them for next month when the person from Botec comes?
You can keep those if you'd like, and I'll make sure I reprint them, just so you have them for your information, I'll reprint them for next month.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. It's a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to state, please come to the microphones. Okay, seeing nobody in motion, we will talk about our future meetings. Our next regular board meeting will be May fifteenth at seven PM. Our board plan, or our board committee meetings will be at six PM on May seventeenth, with our planning meeting at seven PM on the seventeenth. So, if nobody has anything else for the agenda tonight, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you for coming.